Counted for, we will call to order the study session to discuss fences adjacent to state highways, and I'll turn it over to Director Workman.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome to your council meeting this evening. This is more for the benefit of the new council folks, but the City Council updated the city's fencing standards kind of in the first half of last year. As part of that process, the council identified that they wished to further discuss the regulations specifically associated with fences adjacent to state highways, and so that's what brings us here this evening.
Can you also, sorry, just took a bite of cookie. We actually updated the fencing policy. The update that we did last year was a revisiting, we had made some changes and we wanted to just check in and see, when did we make the changes the first time?
Was that with the big update?
Yeah.
Okay. That would have been 2019.
Yeah, you were on PTRC.
Oh, that.
You were always on council, so it was pre-COVID, a long time ago. We made some pretty substantial changes to the fencing ordinance, and over that amount of time, we got multiple different people reaching out for multiple reasons that the changes to the fencing ordinance, basically if you change more, if you want to replace more than 25% of your fence, you had to bring it up to code. And that was creating problems for a variety of people for a variety of reasons. So after a few years, it had been a few years, we decided that we would ask P&amp;Z to just check in with the fencing policy, how was it working, how, you know, was it fulfilling its intended goals, et cetera. They brought back some changes, which we did approve, but the one area that still had some stuff we wanted to discuss was particularly fences that back up to state highways.
So is the discussion tonight is limited to this, right?
That's correct.
So you addressed those.
Yes, I mean, I think we felt like we addressed it, right? The other concerns, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that background, Mayor. And yeah, so tonight's presentation is specific only to fences that are adjacent to state highways. So state highways being Hampden, Bellevue, and University, those three, those three streets. The code currently identifies our fencing regulations in Section 163120, and specifically fences adjacent to state highways, they're allowed to be a maximum height of eight feet tall, and they're allowed to have a maximum opacity of 100%. Opacity is just the ability to see through it. And through various points of this discussion, you'll hear me interchange some phrases like a screen-style fence, a closed-style fence, all of that's referencing 100% opacity fence. The caveat, and this is the important part, the caveat to having 100% opacity fence is the code says you have to then meet one of three landscape standards.
Let me also just interject quickly. Eight feet is unique to state highways already. Everybody else can only have six feet.
That's correct. That's correct.
Max.
Correct.
When you say that, unique to state highways, everyone else?
So fences, right, every, so generally the rule is six feet max, and some places it's even shorter, it's like four feet max. But if you are already, one, I guess, concession that was already made to people who are adjacent to a state highway is that they can have up to an eight-foot-tall fence with these standards.
That's correct. So for example, if you're adjacent to Clarkson or Quincy or Happy Canyon, the maximum height is six feet. Adjacent to state highways is the only place the code allows an eight-foot fence.
And I'm assuming that the higher height, the eight feet, and the 100% opacity is as a noise barrier or to recognize noise on state highways?
Yeah, that, I think that would be a very safe assumption to make, yes.
Noise and dirt and all that.
All that, all those externalities that come with being next to the state highway. So the three, the three options that the code says you can do, so this is an attempted drawing, looking at it from top down, what we would call plan view. So the first option that the code gives is that the fence is set back from the right-of-way line slash property line at least four feet, and there's at least two trees or evergreen shrubs provided every 100 feet. The second option that the code provides is that the fence is on the right-of-way line slash property line, but it must be, there must be offsets in that fence, and those offsets have to be no less than four feet deep by 15 to 25 feet long, so that the length of the offset in the fence is no less than 25% of the entire length of the fence. And those offsets have to be landscaped with at least two trees or evergreen shrubs. The third option provided in the code is that the fence is set back 25 feet from the edge of the pavement, and landscaping is provided with one tree every 20 to 30 feet, or landscaping will screen at least 25% of the fence within three growing seasons. So you may say to yourself, well, why does the code have this type of requirement? The intent is to try and avoid what we would refer to in the community development world as a fence canyon. So we're trying to avoid having tall fences that you can't see through right on the property line. It has an aesthetic impact, there can be certain perceived safety impacts, right? If something happened, you can't get off the sidewalk. And it also doesn't provide any place for snow storage during winter months. So the picture on the bottom there, that's what the code is trying to achieve, where there's landscaping between the fence and the right-of-way line, there's some aesthetic appeal to that, there's places to store snow, store, store snow, store snow, thank you, during the winter months. While there are properties that have implemented the code and it's resulted in an aesthetically improved environment, there are properties throughout the village where the intent has not been fully realized, or there are properties that have allowed their fence to deteriorate rather than construct a new fence that meets the current requirements. And that's sort of what brings us here today, is because of some of these existing conditions, council wanted to discuss these requirements and if they're still meeting the wants and needs of council and the larger community.
Can I ask a question right now?
Absolutely.
So in full disclosure, my own neighborhood where I live has this issue. So just for the record, is the 25% of your replacement, you know, the rule that if you're going to replace at least 25% of your fence, is that the same rule for fences on the state highways?
That's correct. That applies to any fence.
Okay.
Any fence that is what we call legally non-conforming, so it was legally permitted under a different set of standards that would have allowed that type of fence.
Right.
If it's legally non-conforming, those fences can be repaired and replaced up to 25% in a two-year period. So you have to, you can do 25%, then you got to wait two years, and you can do another 25%.
And how often do you find fences that were never legally conforming?
It does happen. Here in Cherry Hills Village, that's very rare.
Okay.
But it does, we do have that scenario.
Okay.
So Paul, who owns actually the fence? Who's responsible? I'm thinking of in my district, Woody Hollow, I think this is a picture of it here, along Bellevue. You know, the fence is deteriorating. Is that the HOA? Who, who has responsibility for that fence when it's not in a private property?
I'll give you the planner answer, and then Jay can give you the public works answer. If the fence, if the fence is in a commonly, or adjacent to a commonly-owned tract of land, then it's generally the HOA's responsibility for maintenance. And a lot of these scenarios where there's not an HOA, it's the homeowner, the owner of the property is responsible for the maintenance.
And I'll just say that usually the ones that look pretty good are HOA-owned and maintained, and it's the ones that are owned by private property owners where this kind of maintenance thing becomes very costly and burdensome to them.
And do you know specifically, I'm just thinking of, you know, going west on Bellevue, south on University, west on Bellevue, on the right there, where it's a fence canyon, and it's deteriorating. And that's Woody Hollow is most of that in there, it's not private property.
Actually, only a small portion of that is Woody Hollow. If you look at the way the, the different parcels are in there, there's a small section that the city takes care of.
Okay.
And then there are no HOAs in there, those are all individual property owners.
Individual property owners, okay, thank you.
So I think, if I'm correct, figure, figure three is a private property owner, right? Just right over here on University. Figure four, I think, is Cherry Hills Farm.
That's correct.
Yeah. And that's maintained by the HOA.
Correct.
It looks lovely. And then figures five and six, I believe, are private property owners.
That's correct.
And do not look as lovely.
Yeah, windshield survey, you can tell pretty quick what's maintained by an HOA and what's not.
So are five and six, just so that we can understand a little bit, are these both along Bellevue?
That's correct, yeah.
And the five is?
Five meets our code.
Yeah, because it's, it's got the landscaping.
Yes.
But six is sort of the Woody Hollow that I think that Council Robinson was talking about? Am I right?
No.
Is that west of University?
That's a little farther west.
Yeah, that's a little further west. It's a little further west?
That picture is a little further west, towards Clarkson, towards Clarkson.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it also, it does not conform with our code.
Correct.
Because it's solid right on the property line.
Right.
But in my opinion, and this is just an opinion, I think that looks better than five. I think six looks better than five.
Just, just to clarify, that fence actually does meet our requirement. The retaining wall that you see, that's the concrete in front there, that's the property line, that fence is set back four feet from that, from the property line, but the landscaping has died.
The, the concrete?
Yep, on the top.
It is? Okay. There's another one on Bellevue that's actually east of Holly, that looks a lot like that, but it's right on the, it basically butts the sidewalk.
Yes.
Kind of like this wooden fence in figure five, but it's a solid concrete wall. And so I, I think the point of these photos is to demonstrate that you can comply, you can be in compliance with the code and still not look great.
Yes.
And you can have a solid 100% opaque fence canyon that actually looks better, right? So anyway.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's exactly.
Mayor, if I could, just for one second, I had intended to say this before Paul got started, so I'm interrupting for just a moment. In reviewing the audio from the last council meeting, we all, and I'm looking at staff as well, we all can do better about talking into the microphone for recording purposes. So I am going to try and do a better job about gently and in a very friendly manner reminding everyone.
Yes.
To speak into the microphone.
We tried to listen to the recording, and there are a lot of sections where you cannot hear what people are saying. Please continue.
All right.
Please continue.
Is this thing on?
Yeah.
So we did, as part of the preparation for this, we did look at three sort of generally neighboring communities to see what they do. The short version is there's, there's not a best practice, there's not really a one-size-fits-all. I can just tell you from personal professional experience, every community I've ever worked for struggles with this issue about fencing and fencing adjacent to right-of-ways and streets and all that. Generally speaking, if the fence is owned and maintained by an HOA, it generally looks pretty good. If it isn't owned by the HOA or maintained by the HOA, generally you start to have maintenance issues with it. That's true with any jurisdiction I've ever worked in. Just briefly, Greenwood Village has an interesting approach where they put the onus on the property owner, and the property owner does a noise study. Assuming certain thresholds are met, they are allowed to consider these types of walls or fences as a noise attenuating structure. And interestingly, I thought, as part of the approval of that, there are cases where Greenwood Village would ask for, not ask for, but require essentially an easement for pedestrian access outside of the wall. Inglewood, it didn't matter to them whether it's a state highway or a local street, they require a one-foot setback from any public sidewalk. And then Centennial, I thought, was the most complex scenario, where they have a huge matrix where the opacity is a result of how much landscaping and/or a berm you're going to put in. There's a formula box, and it's, it's very complicated. Again, it just highlights that there, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach to this type of issue. Within your packet, there are four options that were, that were identified. Again, they're not the only four options that exist out there, there's probably others. Likewise, there were some pros and cons that were identified. That is not an exhaustive list, and what one individual may consider a pro, another may consider a con. So it really is just intended to provide some discussion topics for council as part of your, your proceeding here. The first option is no change to the existing requirement. This would create some consistency with the, with the requirement itself. The intent, the design intent is being met, there's also an opportunity for snow storage. The other side of that coin is that we often hear that it's expensive to construct and maintain. There's a perception that private property is somehow public space, that the, the maintenance of the landscaping between the fence and the property line can be challenging. The bottom right-hand image is an image, this is the Sunset Drive neighborhood just north of Cherry Hills Country Club. If I live at 11 Sunset Drive, in order to maintain my landscaping, I have to go all the way up to the intersection of Sunset and University, then come back down University to maintain the landscaping, and a lot of folks just don't do that, frankly. The other potential downside is that for fences that are legally non-conforming, when there's a new fence location required, either through the four-foot offset or through the carve-outs in the, in the adjacent to state highways, that can have an impact on existing landscaping and specifically mature trees. The top image there shows that there's an existing fence where the red line is located. In order to meet the city's requirement, they would have to either move it back four feet or have those four-foot offsets, which would either require the relocation or the removal of some pretty, pretty mature trees. Any questions before I move on? Okay. The second option would be to grandfather, quote unquote, existing fences. So fences that exist today could be replaced in whole, so they wouldn't have to do 25% every two years. They could replace them 100% as long as it's a similar or like-for-like height, location, and fence style. Potentially with this one, there's some consistency with existing conditions, and there's probably minimal impact to existing landscaping in that scenario. The flip side of that is that there may be areas of the, where the fence canyon effect is maintained, and there wouldn't be new opportunities for snow storage during winter The third option is to somehow modify the existing language. There was, there was some language that was provided as an example, staff's not advocating or recommending that. Again, it's more to start a conversation with council, but we could modify the existing language to council's desire. With that one, there's, there's at least some consistency with the existing regulation that exists today, so that folks that have made a change to their fence based on the code requirements, there would be some consistency in the community.
Can I ask a quick question about this with the examples that you've provided? So A, it seems like a key difference in this approach is that you don't have to do the landscaping. And is the picture on the bottom, is that option B? So it's right on the, it's adjacent, is that adjacent to the side? It looks like it's adjacent to the sidewalk.
Yeah, it is. That could be a version of B. That was just really intended to be an illustration of, should council decide to just modify what's there, aesthetically or in the real world, this is what some of that might look like. So should council want to allow a fence all the way up to the, to the shared property line and do some sort of requirement of materials and columns, that is an example of what it might look like.
Okay. So I'm just, to me, I was trying to internalize what the differences are between this. One, so it can be on the property line and be 100% opaque in this proposed possible language, if it's made of wood, wrought iron, masonry, or cinder, or something other than cinder block. And there's, I guess, there's not really a picture of that, but okay. You could do, you can do it right on the property line if you have these columns to kind of break up the, the wall effect, right? Or you can do the bump outs that are offered in the, in the existing plan, but you don't have to landscape them and maintain that landscaping.
Yeah, that was, that was the intention to start the conversation.
Okay.
Really what it was trying to get at is, is, is having landscaping between the fence and the, the property line, how important is that to council? That's really what that specific, not proposal, but that, that language was intended to get at, how does council as a body feel about landscaping between a fence and, and the property line?
How do homeowners feel when you say, with the existing, in these bump outs that you have to put landscaping in there, and we're going to use it for snow storage?
I have that note, too.
Yeah.
Like we're going to dump, you know, ice and snow.
Whether it's, whether it's snow storage or anything else, folks get grumpy when we tell them that their code requires that they have the bump outs. The snow storage is kind of whatever, their big thing is they don't want to maintain
Don't we have a problem with people maintaining their property between their fences and the property lines not on state highways?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Whether it's on a state highway or not, yes, that's, that's a common frustration.
And there are many incidents where you have to drive around, and maybe there's fences so opaque that they don't really see it, but those of us on the other side sure do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, and my comment would be the same, that the precedent that we're setting here, even though it's on a state highway, will be the same argument that the private owner is going to come in and make if we do away with the landscaping requirement, because one of the things that we heard originally about the bump out was the maintenance, not only does Paul mention having to walk around, but the concept of either installing sprinkler lines that go under a fence, or having holes in your fence that allow for a hose to go through that in essence you never see, and you never know if somebody messes with or something like that, to know what's going on, and the maintenance of just a landscaping feature outside of your property, keeping the tree alive, things like that. The point is that the vegetation is as much the issue as the bump out itself, is the, the requirement on the landscaping feature, I think, is almost greater than what the wall looks like, because, am I right, Paul, that... am I right, Paul, that in the pictures that you showed before this, of the fence falling over, are we, do we have jurisdiction at that point to say that there's a nuisance or non-compliance with code?
I wouldn't say necessarily there's a non-compliance with code. If anything, it would be some type of an unsafe structure, right? If it were potentially going to fall over into the right-of-way or something, then we might have some leverage, but that would be a very specific kind of case-by-case basis.
And I think that's one of the biggest things that prompted revisiting this a year ago, was that a lot of fences in various situations around town were falling over, and people wanted to fix them, but fixing them was so cumbersome and expensive, and bringing it up to the code was, that we had kind of inadvertently created a situation that made it so burdensome to make your fence look nice and to maintain it, that people weren't doing it. And so I think we addressed that in a lot of the other places in the village, but there was at least one specific example on a state highway where what, even what we had now still required, you know, the bump outs would require, when you live on a state highway and you can have a six-foot fence, or even an eight-foot fence, but you have a wall of 40- to 50-year-old trees, those trees are more valuable than the six-foot wood fence, right? And so to make, somebody, if they had to cut down their trees in order to install these bump outs, or move the fence back four feet, they're like, we're just not doing it. We'll just let the fence fall over.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I'll keep my questions till we're a little further along.
Okay. One thing that I want to mention as well, related to the maintenance, is oftentimes we might suggest to a homeowner, well, you can always put a person gate in that wall. Oftentimes, people do not want that as a solution, because they feel like it is a potential compromise of their safety. And the other thing I said, I don't remember.
Just to comment to, just looking at the Greenwood Village approach, I would assume at some point, they would have allowed wood structures, since that was the primary means of building fences until maybe 50, 60 years ago, and they moved to a concrete and masonry and brick structures. The wood looks great when it's first built, often around the village, it's the wood structures that are in disrepair, that are not stained, that are not taken care of. I don't know, it's just something that I think the concrete and masonry wears better over time, something maybe, I'm just noting that.
Yeah. And I did remember what I was going to say is, you know, there is a relief process for the fencing requirements, which is the public hearing variance process. Now, there are specific approval criteria that the board has to find, and, right, so it's not a guarantee, but if someone is unable to meet the fence requirement, the relief mechanism for that is to go through that public hearing variance process.
And couldn't we, with respect to pre-existing non-conforming fences, that in order to make conforming would require losing heritage trees, or however you want to define the trees, couldn't we make specific exceptions in the variance process to deal with that?
Certainly, council could amend the variance criteria.
So that your situation on South University, we could structure it so that they somehow can, you know, they can propose, this is a way that we can do it without having to take out the trees, and maybe there is a way, I don't know.
Sure. Yeah, right, there's, you could amend the variance process, you could create a new process, you could make it an administrative determination, that would be a different conversation with different highlights, but yeah, certainly council could, quote-unquote, carve out exceptions for existing mature trees, yes.
So I think that's the, that's the last slide, Paul, or is there?
Well, there's, the fourth option is really, let's start over approach, in which case we would, we being staff, would go back, do some research, probably have another study session with council, talk with, excuse me, talk with planning and zoning commission, get their input. So it would be a little bit of a process, but if that's the desire of council, then we would start that process. And that's the last slide.
Okay. So this was something that, in the, when we discussed this last time, the, continuing the conversation about state highways was something that I requested, and so I'm going to jump in, to lay the groundwork for where my thought process was. If you can go back to figure five, please. What was happening is that people who had fences like this, and if you're watching and this is your fence, I'm sorry, I don't mean to criticize your fence, if you had either of these fences, people were coming to the city saying, I'd like to repair my fence, but I either can't afford to do it, because this wood fence, a brand-new wood fence, is a lot cheaper, and these are big lots along our state highways for the most part. The cost of building a brick or masonry fence, they're beautiful, and certainly in the pictures of the new ones, they look lovely, but if they couldn't afford to do that, we're left with this. And so what we had created were, was a code that was making it difficult for people to do what they could to maintain their property and make it look as nice as possible within their ability. And so I think, and there was a specific incident that kind of brought this to the foreground, but not here to try to solve problems for one specific property, cutting down the mature trees was, I really didn't want to force people to do that, I'd much rather have the trees than a fancy fence, personally. And so when this memo came forward, I think the number three, modifying existing regulations, had a lot of great ideas that would address the problem, if you can go back to that slide, the option three slide, you know, the columns with the masonry in the middle on the property line, you know, that would work in a scenario like that, they wouldn't have to cut down their trees, they wouldn't have to landscape the other side, it looks lovely, but if they can't afford that, then we're going to be stuck with their falling-over fence. And that was where I suggested the addition of the grandfather clause. We've lived with a lot of these, you know, these homes along our state highways, for the most part, have been there a very long time. And over time, those highways have gotten bigger. We, I know in one specific case, we had to use, I think, eminent domain to put in accessibility ramps, right? And so the highway came to their fence, not the other way around. And this is why, we talked about this, maybe they would qualify for a variance, that doesn't come to council, but, you know, sort of the problem came to them, not the other way around, and I kind of feel like we've lived with these fences in their current form, if it's a fence canyon, we've been living with that fence canyon for some amount of time, and if they want to replace it with the exact same thing, the same location, the same height, the same materials, we can let them do that. I'm kind of leaning now towards like a two-and-three option, where we'd like to encourage you to do number three, but if none of those work for you, and you just want to replace your fence with exactly what you have now, just new, we've lived with it for how, 50 years, we can live with it for some more.
So to go back to the pictures that you were pointing at.
The five and six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just for clarity, figure six is not in the presentation, it's just in your packet.
Okay.
Let me jump in real quick, as you're doing that.
I think Susan was in the middle of a thought.
Yeah. But looking at these two pictures here that are on the screen.
Yeah.
If I'm understanding, the top picture complies, doesn't it?
For the fence location, but it does not comply with the landscaping requirement.
In that the landscaping is dying.
Or dead, or overgrown with weeds, yes.
Right, right, right. But so, where is it that the cost is the, is an issue?
This one, it's the second one down here.
So replacing.
We would not allow them, number three would not allow them to replace the wood, they would have to use, oh no, I'm sorry, it would, I misread that.
They can use wood.
Wood, wrought iron, it just can't be cinder block.
In that scenario, that's correct.
Okay, so the only one that's not allowed then is number, is that number six that's not on the screen? Is, I don't even know what six is made out of.
It's a cedar material, it's a wood material.
I'm sorry, figure six is the one that's not, it looks like a cinder block wall.
So what looks like the cinder block wall is a retaining wall.
Yeah.
Right, that, I believe, is CDOT put in decades ago, but that's also the property line, and so if you measure back from where that wall location is, then that's where you start to get, where you can put your fence.
So that's a CDOT fence. Oh, so that's not even.
That's why the wooden fence sits so much higher, is because that property sits above grade, above where the sidewalk is, because that concrete-looking wall is actually a retaining wall on the property line.
Well, that's an interesting twist to this whole conversation.
Yes.
Because I know there's more of that, I wonder, is there, is the wall that's east of Holly also CDOT? Because it looks a lot like that.
I don't believe so.
And I don't think CDOT would claim that.
I don't think anybody's claiming that right now.
I don't know if CDOT put it in and turned it over to the homeowners, they did not turn it over to the city. They may say, since it's behind the curb and gutter, that the city would be responsible, but we have never claimed that as ours.
But, so you have a good point, Susan, I had misread that the, that they could use wood, so it could be directly on the property line, full 100% opacity, and anything other than cinder block, well, wood, wrought iron, or masonry, basically.
Right, but and then in that second picture on the slide on the screen, it would just be an issue of creating the setbacks in that, which maybe trees are an issue on the other side of that or not, I don't know, but it seems to me, again, we could have some language that permits a variance to accommodate that in a manner that's satisfactory to planning and zoning, right?
Well, I don't even know they would need to, because they could also have, because that is, that is wood and masonry, and it's also B, it has columns.
Yeah, you're assuming we go with that option. I'm saying if we were to stay with the.
Oh, well, if we stay with what we have, yeah.
If we stay with what we have, this is.
That would not comply, that's right. And, you know, I know, I guess the cost issue would, I know there's one fence on University that is chain-link fence, which would not be allowed under any of these, and is a much less expensive option than any of these.
It's currently allowed.
Yeah.
Right, so here in the village, we don't regulate the fencing material, we just regulate the location and how much you can see through it.
Right.
So a question on the grandfathering the existing fences, are there areas that are not fenced? I mean, that would uncover, that would be the whole city, basically, for grandfathering existing fences, right? I'm trying to understand.
Oh, I think the grandfathering would be just if you're adjacent to a state highway, fences that are adjacent to state highway.
Right, I'm talking about adjacent to state highways. If we grandfather, that's all of the fencing, right? Is there?
All that currently exists, that's adjacent, yes.
That would be non-conforming.
Non-conforming, yes.
Adjacent, right.
Right, okay, but I don't think there's any areas along the state highways that where there's not fences currently, or are there?
Up on Hamden, there's.
There's at least, yeah, there's a few on the east side of Bellevue, going towards Holly.
Okay.
Where there's a couple new homes going in right there, that there hasn't, there may be fence now, I haven't been that direction in a while.
And then our park property on Hamden doesn't have a fence.
Doesn't have fence, there's no fence on.
And just to the west of that park property, there are three houses that don't have fences, right along, east of Albion, west of Albion, and the second house, east of Albion, don't have fences.
Okay, so there are some.
What's the issue here? I don't want, I'm, you guys are all trying to figure out what spots, what difference?
I'm just trying to understand, if we grandfather, I thought that, I mean, what are we doing, really, right? Because that's going to allow everybody.
That's what I'm trying to get to, grandfather something, it's got to exist.
Only the fences, though.
It's just not. It's just the non-compliant fences that are being grandfathered.
Exactly.
Not unfenced, not compliant.
If there was no fence there, there's nothing to grandfather, and if somebody wanted to build a fence there, they'd have to comply with the ordinance.
They'd have to comply with the regulation, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I just, I've lost the P here, and I was just trying to.
So I think, in my initial thinking, one of the reasons I liked the grandfathering idea was because when, when we, years ago, when we changed the fencing ordinance, it was a conscious decision to require people, and we debated the 25%, 30%, whatever, you know, how many years, we debated all of that, it was a very conscious decision, because we wanted to encourage people to move away from the fence canyons, and, you know, we were talking about the whole city, not just highways, but along trails, you know, having eight-foot solid fences on either side of a three-foot-wide trail, or something, so we talked about all of that at the time. And the idea was to encourage people to bring it up to code. Allowing grandfathering in existing fences in their exact location, exact height, same materials, but not providing these number three options, I think, does encourage people to build a fence that complies with our current code, but if that doesn't, really doesn't work for them, whether it's landscaping, whether it's cost, whether it's, they have an option to just basically keep what they've got.
I guess what I don't understand is why are fences adjacent to a state highway any different than fences on Quincy or Clarkson, or why should those be grandfathered to exist the way they are when we don't permit other fences on major streets, but not state highways, to be grandfathered? I'm not understanding why we treat them differently.
That was my comment, that we are setting a precedent for those same people to come back to us and say that this is the same issue that I face, I don't want to have to walk, if I live in the middle of the block, to get to my outside, I have to walk all the way down to the end of the block and back around, or.
But we have already exempted those people. Clarkson, Happy Canyon, Quincy, Dahlia, they're already exempted, they're called out separately.
Right, right.
And they're grandfathered?
They're not grandfathered, but they can have, they don't have to meet these requirements. I don't, can, we made, and that was why, that's what we did a year ago, was we added streets to that list of exceptions, I think it was Dahlia, or, yeah, no, it was Colorado.
We did Colorado Boulevard only on the east side, and only as far south as Mansfield.
Yeah, it was that stretch.
So in theory, the western side is, well, the western side of Colorado Boulevard is already covered because it's adjacent to a trail, so we didn't feel we needed to do that.
And it's mostly not fenced over there, but.
Correct, and then south of Mansfield, on the east side, we mostly, we had four houses down at the canal, and then we had basically Three Pond Park, and then a private piece of property that we didn't address.
Yeah.
I think one other distinction is, our city rights of ways aren't built right-of-way to right-of-way, so there's more undeveloped property between the street and the fence that doesn't bring it to make it a canyon, and doesn't put it right next to the road where.
Like Quincy, as an example, that we have a lot of right-of-way that is not part of the road.
And that's why we maintain the rights of ways on Quincy, and Colorado, and Holly, because.
So why didn't we include the state highways when we did this a year ago? Why didn't we include the state highways when we did this a year ago?
The, I'm trying to remember, because I'd have to go back and look what the exceptions were that we made for-
So I can provide support from what I remember, which is, you're right, there were a handful of amendments. The ones relevant for this conversation were removing the landscaping requirement for those homes that are double-fronted between Colorado and Albion, and north of Mansfield, south of Colorado Boulevard. And then also to take out the landscaping requirement for some of the homes that back up to Happy Canyon. For, for a lot of these same maintenance reasons. And with the, the, those double-fronted lots there between Albion and Colorado, we also allowed for them to have a maximum height of six foot, because a lot of those fences were already existing, already six foot. Council felt that because of the nature of those double-frontage lots, that they were not having the same level of privacy potentially as an interior lot that doesn't have right-of-way on both sides of the lot. That's, that's my recollection.
So that, so we didn't exempt everything, just certain houses?
Correct.
Some of them are already, some of the streets were already excluded. And we added to the list of excluded.
That's exactly right. Let's see, sorry. Clarkson was already in that list, I think a portion of Happy Canyon was also in that list. And I'm confident in my memory that we did ask council, we identified a few different streets and whether or not council wanted to change the fencing requirements. So we asked about Quincy, Holly, Colorado. The ones that council wanted to move forward with was just council, and I believe it was, or, not council, Colorado, and Happy Canyon.
Quincy was already, yeah, so it's south Clarkson, east Happy Canyon, and we added north Mansfield, east of Colorado, west of Albion, south of East Hamden Avenue. So within any setback from a lot line that is also a right-of-way line, so Clarkson and east Happy Canyon were evidently already in there.
They were.
And then we added just that little double-fronted section.
Correct.
And that they can, they can be six feet tall, and they can have hundred-foot opacity, where others can't be hundred, they can't be both six feet and one hundred percent. And I think that the reason, I guess, the reason, I don't really remember, but I would have to imagine that Area Five addresses, this is in this attachment, it's not in the memo, it's in the, the exhibit A, the ordinance, that Area Five is within any setback from a lot line that is a state highway right-of-way line. And that had been left, and, you know, this came to us from, went through the whole process, planning and zoning, et cetera. And they had left that as eight-foot, hundred percent opacity, as long as you met footnote four, which was the landscaping requirements. And I, at the time, was like, you know, I, I was kind of hoping that something would have been proposed for that. And it wasn't. And so this is the follow-up conversation, just as an aside, if we decide that we want to make any changes, the processes that it would go through, planning and zoning, it doesn't just jump leapfrog to us.
That's correct.
So I don't know that, you know, I guess, that we just didn't really have proposal to discuss regarding state highways at that time. And I brought it up, I had brought in some show and tell, some pictures of of those fences that, you know, one complied and looked terrible, and one did not, and wasn't beautiful, but was better than the other one.
Let me see if I can jump in for a second. On the memo that Paul presented to us, when you said figure five existing condition, and it's non-compliant because the vegetation doesn't, it's dead or not.
I actually think it is compliant.
We actually, though, whether it is or isn't, the fact of the matter is, is that can be rectified in today's world with native plants or drought-tolerant plants a lot more easily than we used to be able to rectify some of those. And so maybe the fix there might be expanding the list of permissible landscaping options to include drought-tolerant plantings besides just the evergreen or whatever it is that is currently there. With respect to figure six below, my suggestion would be that we find out who owns the concrete wall. And I guess the question really comes down to, if that is compliant because, not the concrete wall, but the wooden fence behind it is compliant because it is four feet back, and I don't know if it has vegetation or not outside it, but whether or not, and I know it's a little off-target for what we're talking about, is we should contemplate whether or not we want the concrete wall there anymore. And whether or not the city or, with the private owners want to take that down. With respect to the presentation that is up on the screen right now, the lower picture, you know, I do think that there's an argument that at least on the left side, we do have a structural failure, and that we do have an enforcement option there that currently exists. I think what we're talking about, though, is what do we want to see as the fix, not the enforcement action? And, you know, to me, I think we've got the avenue available that Paul mentioned already, and that is to seek a variance. And, you know, then I would say for this specific subsection, when it comes to replacing a fence, that there be an additional consideration in our variance provision, that we're not changing the requirement, we're just saying, if you have foundational trees, or whatever we want to call them, heritage trees, I think that that is a consideration that goes into, you know, a, a good claim for a variance. I don't know if that also comes in on other areas that we're setting a precedent that we're a little nervous about.
I think that'd be one of the concerns, is making sure you're not doing something that actually has an impact elsewhere on the variance. But, and all of these are good suggestions that I'm hearing, but it's, let's go back up here, because this is tinkering around the edges, which would be fine, but that's saying, we don't think we need to make a change for our state highway things. That's what we ought to talk about first, do we need to do that or not?
That's exactly what-
And then, you know, which, which again, grandfathering would be that, that'd be like a new section that we'd be doing. No, no, we don't want to do that, okay, now we come down to the tinkering.
Well, and that's in essence what I was saying, is I think that, what I am saying is, we don't need to change our ordinance on fences, on state highways.
Right.
We may need to change our criterion for a variance when it comes to a request for a variance along a state highway.
Right, and I guess from my perspective, I, and do we need to change, I don't, you know, we don't need to do anything, the question is, is would we want to? Susan raised an interesting question, what's the difference between the state highways and some of these others? But the point is, is the state highways are different, okay? You, you live along University, you live along Hamden, you live along Bellevue. It ain't the same as living along Bellev, uh, living along Quincy, or Franklin, or, or anything else, it just isn't. Okay, that's my view, again, that doesn't have to be anybody else's. And if I lived along there, you know, I'd, I'd want to be able to have a privacy fence, an annoy's fence. And the issue is, is there are a bunch of them there, and we've been living with them forever. And would we like maybe some of them to change? Yeah, but I guess at the end of the day, I'm saying, hey, if people want to replace what's been there, and everybody is living with it, fine, go ahead and do that, but you got to do the same thing. With only one caveat, and I recognize that if you did it, it would cause all kinds of problems. The point is, like-for-like, it's like going, or better. But, you know, what does that mean, and now that becomes subjective, and it's all over the place. But like, for instance, one of those concrete fences that's sitting there, you know, we'd love to see probably pillars with, you know, bricks or with wood in it, rather than to replace like-for-like with that concrete fence, but I can also see where like or better would start to cause issues, so therefore I probably-
Well, I think they, we do, if, if we were to add a grandfather clause, we would have like-for-like or better, because you'd have like-for-like, or you can comply with, you could do something else, so for example, like this, this fence is falling over, looks like it's six feet. This person may say, you know what, what I really want is an eight-foot fence, the noise is really untenable, and okay, you, you can put in an eight-foot fence that complies with our code, that has the setbacks, and has the landscaping, and has all of that stuff. If you don't want to, if you want to, but if that's too much, and too much maintenance, and too much of a hassle, then you can just fix this. And fix the whole thing, you know, you can replace all of that wood if you want, not just twenty-five percent of it. And make it exactly the same, and so I, I, I agree, that was where I was sort of trying to land while still encouraging people to do it, but-
But I'm, I'm trying to understand, because we're not saying they can't have a fence, and I don't think we're saying there are people that have twelve-foot fences, and we're saying you have to bring it down to eight, and if this is a six-foot fence, they can still have a six-foot fence. I think all we're talking about is the, is the landscaping and the bump backs.
No, they, this fence, they could not replace, it would have to have setbacks. It cannot be on the property line and a hundred percent opaque.
It would have to have the bump back.
It would have to either have setbacks, or the whole thing would have to be moved back four feet, or-
Right, they would have, if they wanted to keep these pillars where they were, they'd have to put these bump outs in it.
Or, or they'd have to do, I mean, I, I don't think those pillars are, they don't meet the, I don't, you couldn't have this fence. You'd have to redo this fence completely. And then you'd have to take out, you know-
Are the pillars in violation of the-
They're just not close enough together for the bump outs. The bump outs have to be every-
Every fifteen to twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the distances are.
The pillars themselves may or may not meet the requirement, the issue is the spacing of them.
Yeah.
Right, they're too far apart to meet whatever that spacing requirement is, so there would have to be new ones added.
Or you might need two bump backs, bump, I mean, they're, it, it's going to be different with every fence.
Right.
I guess the point I'm making is, really what we're talking about is the landscaping issue and the bump outs. Whether we require those or not, on state highways. We're not saying they can't have a fence. I agree, living on a state highway is different than living on, you know-
Dexter.
Yeah, Dexter, thank you. But, but, but we're not saying they can't have fence. I mean, all we're saying is, yeah. Because I, I didn't understand what you were saying, when you're saying that they, because they're on a state highway, they need some kind of variance, and that's what I'm not understanding. Why, why, honest, I, the, the only thing that I, I can't understand is if it's hard to get to your landscaping, okay. But I don't understand why that's any different than if you're on Quincy. I, I agree, the noise may be different, and that's why you're allowed to have a eight-foot fence, and it's allowed to be a hundred percent opaque. But, but, just because you're on a state highway doesn't have anything to do with whether you should have to landscape or have the bump outs.
No, and I, and objectively, I, I agree with what you're saying, it's just that, and again, I didn't go around and check everything. But the point is, is that I think these conditions exist along these state highways, and they don't exist every, most of the other places.
Well, and also, that's what I think you're making an assumption.
But there are-
Well, I know, I mean, but that's just based on-
But let me interject, that on Quincy, you can have a six-foot, hundred percent opaque fence without bump outs. The, it, it, see the, the little four? It's the things that have this max opacity, one hundred percent, subject to footnote four. Those are the ones that are, not everybody is required to do the bump outs and the, it's only these, it's, it's only the people who live, who back up to a somewhat busy street that are required to kind of make their fence beautiful for the people driving behind their house.
I guess-
So that's how it's different, is that there, those people aren't required to do this anyway.
Okay, we're, we're at time, I think what's confusing here is we don't understand what's required, what, where. I'm, I'm, and I know this is a, it's much more confusing for us than it is for you.
I wouldn't make that assumption, it's pretty confusing.
And, and so I-
So we will schedule this for another study session, or just as a report at the end of the meeting, to do a little bit of a fence tutorial, so to speak.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, and then that may set the table for a more common understanding about what's required for this conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
It is six-thirty, and I will call to order the city council meeting. And when the clerk is finished setting up the meeting, if she will please call the roll.
Counselor Heller?
Here.
Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Holland?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation from South Metro Fire Rescue. And we have board members Rich Sokol, Renee Anderson, Mike Delorfano, and we have Stephanie Corbo as well, yep, okay, so welcome, and the floor is yours, I'm, you've done this many times, so you know the drill, and Rich, it's good to see you.
Good to see you, Katie. Hello, everybody, just for the record, Mike Delorfano is not with us tonight. You could tell he's a lot shorter than me, so. My name is Rich Sokol, I'm a member of the South Metro Fire Rescue Board, I also represent District Two, which we're in right now. And we are here tonight simply to share with you the things that we're thinking about in terms of a potential mill levy question on the November ballot, and to get your feedback. We very much value the feedback of our partners in the cities that we serve. So this is really meant to be a short presentation, so you guys know what we're thinking. I've had the chance to meet with Chris and Dave Heller before this. And we would welcome your feedback, questions, and opinions. So we've had other groups tell us, we don't want to tell you how to run your business. We appreciate people telling us how to run their business, because you guys are our partners, and we serve the same citizens. So we very much appreciate hearing from you guys. So I'm going to go through this in five or so minutes, it's, I'm just going to give you a little overview of who we are, and where we are, and why we're contemplating a potential mill levy question on the November ballot. Again, there has been no decision yet, we are just soliciting feedback, but we want everyone to be aware of the fiscal issues that we're facing. You guys have this on your screen, I assume, right? Okay. Which means I have to put on my glasses, okay. So just real brief, South Metro, as you're probably aware, we serve roughly five-hundred-and-fifty thou, or five-hundred-and-seventy thousand residents, so a little more than one in ten Coloradans. We cover large swaths of Arapahoe Douglas and a slice of Jeffco. Twelve municipalities, three counties, et cetera. Our current mill levy has been in place since two thousand and four. You'll see in a second that we have expanded South Metro through various mergers with other entities, and we're very proud that we were able to bring their mill levy down. We do have the lowest comparable mill levy for special districts, providing fire and emergency services throughout the metro area. We have no debt, we have no plans to take on debt. Right now, thirty-six percent of our revenue comes from, we're funded by a mill levy for property taxes, our mill levy is currently nine-point-two-five. We used to be roughly fifty-fifty between residential and commercial in terms of generating our revenue. Because residential has soared, and commercial has probably fallen, we're now about one-third, commercial, two-thirds residential. You see our mill levy comparison there on the left, that's what we want to highlight. So our mill levies at nine and a quarter, three other fire districts that's around the metro area, you see their mill levies are substantially higher than ours. Again, we're a special district, as a lot of fire and emergency services is done by the municipalities or the cities, so we can only compare ourselves to the other fire districts. You'll also see in the middle that when we merged with the Parker Fire Department, they were almost fourteen mills, and we brought, we were able to bring them down to nine and a quarter, Cunningham was fourteen and a half, and again, we were able to bring them down to nine and a quarter. We, we bring this up just to show you that we do not contemplate a mill levy increase lightly. This is a very, very serious endeavor for our organization. We would only do it if it was absolutely necessary, we're very proud of our fiscal stewardship. proud of our fiscal stewardship. We think we've demonstrated that in the past, especially as you could see by having a lower mill levy. So please don't think that we do this lightly. This is the last thing in the world we really want to do. Okay, not the last thing, but you get the point. Just to show you how the need for our services have been growing, EMS again stands for Emergency Medical Service. So 2/3r of our calls roughly are for medical. And you'll see, obviously, as the metro area has grown, our call volume has grown rather significantly since 2019. If anyone has any questions, by the way, feel free to jump in. Now, one of the issues we have, though, is the inflation that we face, the costs that we face as a fire and ambulance department, far outstrips the general inflation rate. It, it's kind of crazy. Here, we just have some examples of the rising costs that we face for the specific things that we buy. So what you see on the chart in front of you are all the things that we do to outfit a firefighter. And you'll see, roughly, it's been a 40% increase since 2019. But that also pales in comparison to what we pay now for fire trucks, for fire engines, and for ladders. This is mind-boggling to me. I've been on the board since 2010. I think in 2010, a fire engine cost half a million dollars. In 2019, it was 725,000. Now it's 1.3 million, and the lead time is four to five years. So everyone should be in the fire truck business. But, again, so our prices have escalated dramatically. This is probably the key slide. We would not be here discussing this if it were not for the legislative actions. I think we would have been okay. But as you're aware, in the special session last year, the legislature lowered significantly the assessment rate on residential housing. And that is causing us to have a significant decrease in our revenue. So just to be clear, 2024 was actually our peak in revenue. We are having a down revenue now, and our revenue is going to decrease even further. So I know the legislature likes to talk about cuts to their budget, and what they really mean is a slower rate of growth. When we say our revenue has been cut, we mean actual dollars or less than what they used to be.
Can, can you, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what revenue excludes legislation, revenue includes legislation. What does that mean?
The revenue excludes legislation. If the legislature had not made the changes, that would have been our expected revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the blue line. The orange line, obviously, is the revenue after the legislature did what they did.
And Rich, these are on an annual basis? Is it a fiscal year basis?
We're fiscal December.
Fiscal December, okay. And so 16 million shortfall annually, plus 34, so 50 million really short of where you'd like to be. And so on the left, 275, what is the annual budget for this year? Do you know?
Roughly 200 million. Am I, is that right, Stephanie? 200 million?
Thank you.
So, again, these numbers are a little in flux, because we haven't received our property assessment valuations, which is a whole other issue. We know what Douglas County is. We don't know Arapahoe County. If any of you know P.K. Kaiser, I'm trying to get in touch with him. Please tell him to call me. But, so these numbers are, are a little fluid, and I think if anything, they've gotten worse. The other thing that we haven't even included up here is, because we provide ambulance service, Doug, we, we are a Medicaid provider. So for the past several years, the state has been reimbursing all Medicaid providers, or backfilling them somewhat. The state has, so we get 17 million dollars a year from the state as a Medicaid provider. They have told us not to expect that money going forward. So in addition to what you see because of the lower assessment rates lowering our property tax revenue, that seven or eight million is likely to go away, and I don't think that's even in here. So. The point is, is that for us to keep operating the way we've been operating, we simply cannot unless we solve the revenue problem. So we're going to be faced with a choice, or our voters are going to be faced with a choice of either we find a new revenue stream, whether that be a property tax or sales tax, or we cut service. And when I say cut service, 86% of our costs are personnel, are salaries and benefits. So the only way we're going to make this up is by cutting personnel in some shape or fashion. Any questions on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Rich, I would just say for the rest of the council that your email address is lowtaxguy@gmail.com. And as we've talked about this over the years, I know you have mentioned to me several times that you've joined, you wanted to bring fiscal sanity to the fire department, and I think you have done a lot of that. So as a friend, and just maybe you can share, are there cuts? Are there things that can be done fiscally to avoid this? And have you looked at those? What changes have you made? Some of that color, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll let Stephanie address in a sec some of the changes we have made. But let me just say, remember, 500 of our 800 employees are covered by a union contract. So we are in the midst of a three-year union contract that we are bound to. We legally have the right to abrogate that contract, or to renegotiate that contract if we had to, in terms of lowering pay. So we sort of, that, we could do that, but it's very, very difficult, given that we're under contract with our firefighters. Obviously, we want to honor that contract. So with 86% of our costs, Doug, being salaries and benefits, we're either going to cut bodies, or we're going to cut salaries. That's the bottom line. There's no way around it, unfortunately. So. I'm going to turn it over to, did I answer your question, Doug?
Yes. Any more detail on, are there other costs outside of salary and benefits that could be addressed, or I'm just-
Sure.
I'm a finance guy, so.
Right.
Well, I wonder if I could just as well, just, because, and you did a great job. By the way, first of all, as a resident, thank you to South Metro. I mean, I really appreciate this fire station being there. We really do appreciate everything you do. Having said that, and I go, wow, that is a big increase, 40% since 2019. And again, I just look at it from a, property values have gone way up beyond that in that period of time. So, and that's, what I can't get from this is, how come, still clearly, I don't understand why your revenues have gone down, even with that adjustment. Because we look at that from our own perspective here, and we sit back and go, we were worried about that, too, because Cherry Hills, almost, you know, so much of our revenue comes from residential real estate tax. And we're going, well, okay, the increase in property values just about offset that at the end of the day. How come it didn't do that for you guys?
Yeah, can I add to that, Earl? Just because I think you can address them probably all at the same time. The mill levy comparison is actually impressive, but it doesn't tell the story. The story is mill levy times tax base. And so how does that compare to other jurisdictions? And, and that, that's really, I think, what you're saying.
Yeah, so those are a lot of questions. Again, I'm Stephanie Corbo. I'm the CFO. In 2023, our 9.25 mil generated more revenue. And then all of a sudden, the 2024 assessment went up. So we got this huge windfall of revenue. A good portion of that was actually because Senate Bill 238 had affected our assessment rates for '24. So a good portion of our revenue increase was a backfill from the state of 10 and 1/2 million. That was a one-year backfill that we do not get any longer. And so for 2025, our actual property tax revenue went down a few million. Now, take that same assessment rate on property taxes, and have, go from 6.7 down to 6.25 as an assessment rate, and have that credit for the first 10% up to $70,000 for someone's home. That's another $16 million loss in revenue for us. And so the, we got a wind fill one year for '24, and then it dropped out because we don't have the backfill any longer. So that's, that's how our property taxes got adjusted. Any other questions about property taxes? Because I want to talk about some of the-
Well, Earl, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, but I'm not sure that answers the question relative to benchmarking, and, but, which gets, Rich, to your point, and by the way, big fan of South Metro and a lot of history as well, but, and that is financial stewardship. So, you know, if you take the, the mill rate, or the proposed new mill rate, times the current assessed value, and compare it to other, like, fire departments, you know, where does that leave South Metro from a financial stewardship perspective?
I haven't done that assessment, so I can't answer that question right now, but I can certainly look at it and get back to you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess just my question was, and when you went through that, you talked about, you know, the assessment rate going down from 6.7 to 6.25, backfill not being the same. And then you said that, that amounted to a loss in revenue of $16 million. Did you mean that those adjustments equaled $16 million, or the sum of your total revenues, because that which wasn't affected by the adjustments went up because the property values went up? So you're basically saying that all toll, all of your revenues from that went down by 16 million. Is that correct?
It depends. So we expected growth to happen, and we did lose 10.5 million. So it was there one year, and it wasn't there the next. So that is completely gone.
Right.
We did have growth on the assessment rates that were then applied to a lower assessment value. That lower assessment value yielded $16 million less from that assessment value.
That's why you have line.
That's why the line goes down and is still slightly growing.
Okay.
We did, we did have projected growth in here of 3 and 1/2 and 1% every other year, with the even year being higher, because that's how we see that. What this doesn't account for is that we recently got some information back from Douglas County, and the overall assessed values from Douglas County generate a, a lower overall value. And so that's another $5 million impact just from the Douglas County portion of our property taxes.
So their assessed value has gone down.
It's gone down. It's gone down. And that's not reflected in here. The other thing that's not reflected in here is, as we were going through our planning process with the Medicaid supplement that we get for, for our ambulance transports, that $7 million, they told us not to plan for it. This program is likely to end in 2026. So that's, that's a very complicated way of explaining our, our property taxes. But a mil, a 9.25 mil that was generating revenue doesn't generate the same amount of revenue and keep pace with the inflationary costs that we have. Our CPI, if we look at Denver Regional CPI from 2019 to today, is a 22% increase in overall inflation. And our, our cost of the things that we buy are between 40 and 70% higher. And in some cases, some of our emergency equipment is 135% more. Some of that, we've started to see tariffs come through on a couple of our invoices, but some of it is really catching up with the trades to be able to produce some of the equipment that we have. So while the supply chain was behind, the supply chain is now starting to become available, but now the tradesmen, to be able to produce the products, they're not there. And so it's taking a while to, to get those supplies that we need online. I want to kind of just jump back here really quick to this, this firefighter. This firefighter right now is wearing about $20,000 worth of equipment. And every single firefighter that we have, they have to have their, their bunker gear, two sets of that, their boots, the breathing apparatus on their body, and the hose, as well as there's a green radio that you can't see that's $8,000. And so that's really what's driving a lot of the costs, because a lot of the cost for the equipment that we have, it's required equipment for them to do their job. And those costs are increasing so excessively along with the apparatus that we need to be able to respond. And so while the equipment and capital line that we see growing so substantially in this chart, that's driven by required equipment that we need to be able to do the job to respond. And those costs are just going up. We just got board approval to be able to get in line for a fire truck in 2029. We have no idea what the cost of that's going to be. So we're using the, the current inflationary rates, and we're using the 10-year historical to drive our 10-year plan. So right now, everything outside of facilities is growing at a 3.3% rate, which is probably not even realistic. We also have some new capital in that green line. In order to respond to our entire population of almost 600,000 residents, we need to add two new fire stations. So we have a dispatch center. That's a lot of our employees in our, in our building. And they look at a whole service model, and when they get calls in, they look at the nearest apparatus to be able to send to that incident. And so it could be the one that's closest to them, but if that engine is out, it could be an apparatus from a different station that's further away. And so in order to meet the response times, we really need to bring two stations online. Those two stations are included in that green line on this chart. But also, too, there's operating costs associated with those stations. So if we build a station, we now need to bring on new FTE to be able to run that station. So that's why you see a little bit more of an accelerated line. The things that we do, because most of our costs are employees, to really, like, look at, how do we find some value engineering and savings and things like that, we go through an annual process of negotiating our contracts with the vendors for what we buy. So we're constantly trying to figure out the best way to lower some of the contracts for services and equipment. We're also evaluating our lifecycle replacement on everything that we have. And so we're trying to meet those federal and state government guidelines for the lifecycle replacement. So we hold them as long as we can. We're trying to get in a place to where we can go after grant money. A lot of that grant money is not available. So a lot of that equipment, we have to replace it every five to 10 years, based on the life of it. And those are the things that we're buying. So we're trying to look at those big things and get the most we can out of it. Same with our apparatus. Those things, we need to make sure that are also, you know, being replaced in a, in a, in an efficient manner as well. And so we're extending those as long as we can. And that's really a big bulk of what we spend money on, is equipment, apparatus, and then salary. I hope that helps.
Yeah, very helpful. So I think the other big question, and you alluded to it, is service delivery. And South Metro is, I think, best in the nation in many regards. Can you talk a little bit about maintaining that level of service? I mean, that's, I think, aside from fiscal responsibility, what we care about the most for our citizens. And maybe it's both ways. If the mill levy or sales tax does not pass, or if it does, what can we expect in Cherry Hills Village, relative to the engine company we've got here? And maybe, is there still a medic unit in 37s? I don't know anymore.
I don't know that, that incident. I'm sorry.
I believe so.
Okay.
I think the last time I was there, it was there.
Okay.
I could be wrong.
So we, we look at our district as a whole, and we also look at adjacent incidents that we respond to. And so when we have dispatch calls, they come in, and we're really looking at who's the closest to be able to, to respond to that incident. And so asking for either a sales tax or a mill levy would help us continue to maintain the service that we're delivering now, which would include bringing online two new stations, because the increased volume that we have in terms of incidents that you saw on that prior slide-
What would those be? Can you say just roughly?
I don't know what the speed would be, but we're looking at maintaining the same. If we don't have this increase in revenue, we don't have enough now to meet this increased demand, plus we would have to look at reductions to our existing FTE, which would be from the line as well. And so that would just mean us responding, we're going to give you the best service that you want to pay for, which sounds terrible, and what the smart man said last week. But we, we don't have an answer of exactly the time. What we will know is that we're not going to have as much people and as much apparatus in operation to respond. And so that could mean delays. We're going to show up. It's just from how far away.
Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. Yeah, could we back up just a little bit? I, Rich, you started with saying that we don't contemplate this lightly. I received, probably a lot of the people in this room received a, you know, link, a text link to a survey. Have you done, have you compiled the results of that, or any other polling? And I'm curious why that wasn't in, in your presentation, because any other time-
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. So, um, okay. And, um, sort of, Counselor Robinson mentioned this, too, but based on how that polling and survey went, I would recommend, because you also asked for advice, having chaired many mill levy elections- chaired many mill levy elections for our local school board over the last 20 years, I would really highly recommend pointing out whatever budget cuts you can make. People do understand union contracts, and people do understand that, you know, if you're in this position, and that you need to also show what you can do. And then lastly, when are you going to decide? Are, you know, do you have a lot of, you know, present, further presentations at city councils, or what other outreach are you planning before you, before the board makes a decision? So sorry, I know that's a few questions.
Yeah, no problem. So we're going to have to decide.
Backing up what you got to do before you.
We're going to have to decide in August what we're going to do. Nothing is set in stone. I mean, we did pull for a three-mill levy increase. We're still working through the numbers, so. I'm sorry? No, no, we're still worrying as we get more information from Arapahoe and Douglas, and we're trying to find everything we can do to.
So that, that was a long time, that was months ago, the polling that I did.
Good. There's another round of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, sorry, we were kind of, we did a lot of stakeholder engagement, which included sending out a text survey to registered voters within our district. So we got over two thousand responses, and that, that result happened, the beginning of February is roughly when that concluded, and these are the results of that survey. We have over forty presentations like this throughout our entire district that we're doing all the way through July. At the end of June, beginning of July, we'll have a second survey that goes out to ask similar questions to find out, you know, how do people want to help us solve that problem of, do you want us to make cuts? Do you, how do you feel about sales tax? How do you feel about property tax? So July fourteenth, our board will get the results of that second survey, and then August would be when a decision was made. These are the results of that first initial survey, and then also, we do have some more information and feedback on our website, but this is the official from voters. And so most people are familiar with this, our service, and then also, fire is in our name, so it makes it a little bit more clear compared to other agencies that do multiple things, and they're not clear, especially like counties do so much, people don't know what the county does. Eighty-four percent of people really approve of our service, and then if you go to the bottom of this, more people approved of sales tax at sixty-six percent compared to property tax of fifty-seven percent. Those that opposed property tax, we also asked them if they would prefer to have a dedicated capital mill, and that actually did worse than just property tax overall. So those were those results.
I just want to back up, Earl, to your question earlier. So we've all seen our property taxes on our residential homes increase dramatically. Remember, we were fifty-fifty between residential and commercial, and in fact, we're much more sensitive to commercial because the assessment rate on commercials, you're probably aware, was twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, whatever it was, versus seven, it's now lower on residential. So a dollar change in commercial has four times the impact of a dollar change in residential. And just to say, we are deferring all sorts of maintenance wherever we can. We're, we're looking for everywhere we can cut. When I said we're working through the numbers, Karen, we're figuring out exactly now, if this doesn't pass, what exactly we're going to do. I think to answer Dave, your question just earlier, again, I'm only speaking for myself, the last thing in the world we want to do is cut an engine, cut an ambulance. So what's more likely to happen is that it'll just be lower staffed. So it'll still get to you on the same time. Our response time is seven to eight minutes. Generally, that's our standard, but at least for some shifts, when it's not as busy, it'll be lower staffed.
Counsel Robinson?
Rich, if you, if the board decides to move forward with either of these tax ideas, is the idea, I would recommend that you run a campaign. Is that the plan? I mean, you're not just going to put it on the ballot, you're going to need to market and to sell this to the community, similar to how the school board has done it in years past. Is that the, is that the plan?
Yeah, I don't think we're there yet, Doug, because we haven't even decided to do it, but I imagine there would be a campaign. But again, we want to be fiscally responsible, so, you know, we don't want to spend a lot of money on a campaign. So we're going to have to decide that, what exactly we're going to do.
So I don't know if you have more to your, I wanted to make sure you had a chance to go through your presentation, is there more?
Nope.
Okay. So I, I did have one question about the two new fire stations. Obviously, a lot of the areas that you serve, our area is pretty much completely built out, and we are extremely grateful to have this beautiful, relatively new, I still think of it as new, fire station right next door. What is driving that need for two new stations? Where would those be? And, you know, what mechanism, if any, is available for having, you know, do those, I'm assuming it's new development, does that carry impact fees of any kind, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, of course.
And could you go back to the map when, while you discuss that?
Sure.
There.
Okay. So I know the first one, and one I'm more familiar with, is Sterling Ranch down south. So I know the question in your minds is probably, why the hell is Cherry Hills Village going to subsidize a new station, not in Cherry Hills Village?
We didn't say that, Rich, we didn't say that.
I would have, so.
Our residents might say that.
Right. We only put in a new station when the growth justifies it. So Sterling Ranch, I think when it's built out, is going to have, and correct me if I'm wrong, like sixteen thousand homes, so it's, it's starting to be built out now. So the developer generally gives us the land and right away, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that's normal, and I know in Sterling Ranch, that's what occurred. So when it gets to a certain density, obviously, we'll put in a station. But there'll be lots of new tax base there from all the residential homes, so I don't think it would be fair to say that one area is subsidizing another area of the county or of our district.
Well, and in all honesty, you know, I, I really didn't mean it in that way, you know, we are the beneficiaries of a relatively new fire station that lots of people contributed to, including people who don't live in Cherry Hills Village. And so I don't think, but it just, I, I think our residents will be curious to know where those stations are, and, you know, is there any, are the costs of a new station just evenly distributed across the entire district? Is there, there's no larger contribution from the area that's being served or anything?
No, we have to have a uniform mill levy throughout our district, so. So it's Sterling Ranch, and the other one is?
Probably Anthology.
Anthology.
Part of that whole system thing with the response is if we have more people down at Sterling Ranch.
Sorry, can you come to the microphone?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that. Renee Anderson, one of the board members with Rich here, nice to see you all. So as we start pulling resources south where there's no station, we start spending a lot of time down there, and then all that has to pull, pull down for coverage. So there's a whole coverage of this, a system of coverage that happens, and as growth happens and more calls come in in areas that don't have stations to answer those calls, it pulls from stations nearby, therefore changing the response time throughout the whole system, if that kind of makes sense. And building a station, we redid Station fifteen for about ten point two million, although about eight million of that was for the building, some of it was for the land. We had to tear it down and redo some stuff with, with the stormwater and other things. But building a station for ten point two is completely doable, it's, now you have to staff a new station. So fifteen, we didn't have to staff new. Those people were already employees, and they were just responding out of a different station. If we build a new station, we have to employ about fifteen to seventeen new people for all the shifts and the coverage for that. Now, that's ongoing expenses, that's not capital, except for outfitting them at twenty thousand dollars per outfit twice, and all that that goes with it, and the fire truck, and the, so that's where the expenses come, when you add in stations. The stations improve coverage and response time, so that's kind of the how it all goes in a nutshell.
Thank you. You're back. Other questions? Is there any feedback that anyone would like to offer? I know you have, you did ask for feedback, you haven't specifically said sales tax, property tax, but I think I can share that, I'm sure you've heard from many other communities, there are very strong preference from most municipalities for a property tax instead of a sales tax. Cherry Hills Village is a little bit of a different animal in that sales tax you would get on our five businesses, three of which are out of business right now, and from Amazon deliveries. You would stand to make a lot more money on a property tax in Cherry Hills Village. I think that we are sensitive, though, to our other neighboring communities and our partners in the, in the region, that the property tax is their preference, very strong preference. And I know that the polling doesn't always show that, but I think I would share that that was Arapahoe County's experience as well. Their initial polling showed sales tax much higher than property tax, but in the end, they chose to go with the property tax, and it did pass by a pretty healthy margin. So I do not envy your position at all. I know it's a tough job, and it's very essential service, and we're appreciative to have it. And I don't know if anybody has anything else you'd like to offer? All right. Oh, yeah.
Maybe just, like to monitor it and see where it goes, and assuming that we're supportive of it, if that's the case, help out in whatever way we can.
Great. Well, thank you so much for all of you for being here, and best of luck as you sully forth.
It's always good to be with our partners. I'm going next door to see if there's an ambulance.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, good night. Okay, we will move on to audience participation. We do have a few people signed up, so if you have not attended a city council meeting in the past, we always have public comment, anyone from the public is welcome to come. You have five minutes, you'll be called in the order that you signed up, and I just want to remind you that it is not a dialogue, it is an opportunity for the public to make comment, and the council will sit and listen conscientiously, but we don't engage in a dialogue. And please keep it orderly and respectful, and we ask no clapping, no booing, no any of that stuff. And the first person is Lauren, oh, was that?
Jeffra.
Jeffra, thank you.
And also name and address for the record.
Yes, state your name and address for the record. And if Lauren isn't here, are you Gray?
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
So then Gray, Jeffra.
Yes, thank you, good evening. I'm Greg Jeffra, I am a resident of old Cherry Hills. We live at fifty, sixty South Franklin Street. My son Michael is here, our neighbor Paul Murray is here. I feel badly because my wife Lauren was so prepared, and she had to go pick up our daughter from lacrosse.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So here I am.
She's welcome to email comments, just.
I believe she maybe has.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm sort of freewheeling it here, but we live at the intersection, are two houses in from Bellevue and Franklin. As you all know, it's a very busy part of the neighborhood, and there's been some rumors that there could be a traffic light going in. I don't know if that's true, I don't know if it's just rumors, but we are concerned, and we would hope, and I'm sure there's a lot of mechanics and nuances to have this play out and actually get to the place where a light goes in, and I don't know how all that works, frankly, but we would hope that the community and the council would consider something different. I am someone that crosses that road often with our kids on bikes to run the trail, we turn in and out of there all the time. I think we could do a couple different things from a traffic light, namely, just a pedestrian walk with some, some lights, some blinking lights, and it would be amazing, and I see the police there all the time, which I so appreciate, it would be amazing to lower the speed limit, and we've got it at thirty-five, people are going fifty there, easy, because you've got uphill and downhill. If we could even just get a traffic speed limit lower, that would be tremendous. So with, with not knowing all of the details, I think the reality is, a traffic light would be a negative for the community, the charm we have, the, the neighborhood feel, I think it would create more traffic, it would create more noise, and it would just be a detriment to kind of this family-friendly neighborhood that we so love, and so I just would hope that we could think of something different. Again, a pedestrian walk would be my suggestion. One thing I'll say for my wife Lauren, she was talking about a median possibly, kind of like, it's, it's a very narrow, narrow street, I know, but near Glenmore, it's a little wider on Bellevue there, they've got the median, which seems to be helpful with, with traffic as well. So I'm trying to think if there's anything else that she wanted to cover. Yeah, we just, we would just hate, hate, hate a traffic light at that intersection.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
And as I mentioned, it is in a dialogue, but if you have questions about process or whatever, please reach out to, yep, City Manager Council.
Great.
We're happy to fill you in.
We will.
Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for listening.
And next is Paul Murray.
Hi, everyone, Paul Murray, fifteen ninety-seven South Franklin, so I believe Councilwoman McGuire, I think I've fallen to yours. We, we are both across the street on Franklin, so I think we split our residents between the two of you.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure you're both probably well aware and involved with this potential change to Franklin Street into Bellevue, and I would just echo the same thoughts that Greg and Lauren have shared. I think many of our neighbors have concerns over what the final outcome would be, and we hope, and we know that you probably all will explore and work with our partners across the street in Greenwood to find the best solution that keeps everyone safe, but also doesn't necessarily impact all of us residents on Franklin or in the surrounding neighborhoods with pull-through traffic and other things that may come as a byproduct of a light. And so we, we hope that whatever the solutions are, they're presented, so we all can have input, and hopefully, that isn't a light, but there are other options that, that we can all explore. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much for coming. You see, it's not, we don't always get a big crowd here. And I see someone else in the audience, you didn't want to sign, okay, because we don't stand on ceremony here. Okay, well, thank you so much. We will move on to the reports from members of city boards and commissions, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'm, and you may have noticed that the, that the minutes have been amended, so if no one had, no one's withdrawing it, so I'll move approval to approve agenda item, what is it, seven A, the minutes as amended.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. There's no, no items removed, no unfinished business, new business, a discussion of a possible charter amendment, Clerk Gillespie.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. This discussion item was requested by Mayor Protem Holan to amend, to possibly amend the Charter Section nine point ten, which is on your screen regarding the budget and finances, and I'll pass it on to Counselor Holan, to Mayor Protem Holan, to detail the discussion.
Counselor Holan?
And they did a pretty good job of putting in there, so I think you've all read that, but the, the issue is, is that the current language of nine point ten, not only, I think, is too restrictive for the city, it actually causes us to violate the charter. I personally believe we violated it when we approved that, that appropriation for the additional finance director, because at that point in time, we were appropriating more, and there was no change in the revenues. But the point is, is that we were saving all of the funds from not having had a finance director, so there obviously wasn't a problem. This doesn't provide for that. So that's where I'm coming from. So there's, there's really, and it's two issues probably to the council, A, do we think nine point ten is written as a problem? Do we think that it should be changed at some point? That as a separate issue. Then the question is, okay, do you want to do it then in the fall, or when, and if you did, then do you want to combine it with looking at other changes that might be necessary for the charter? But the first one is, is does anybody else see nine point ten as a problem like I do?
I hear a yes. I hear several yeses, yes.
I have a question before I answer, and that is, how is this different than a supplemental that we, or why could we not make use of supplementals to the budget to address these type of issues instead of saying that we're violating the charter?
We're, we're not, I mean, that's, that's the whole point. When we do a supplemental... When we do a supplemental, that's what we're doing. We're changing the budget. This basically says that we have to, can only do it when we have anticipated revenues in excess of what the budgeted revenues are. And that happens a lot. I mean, we do, there are projections that go on where the revenues change to go up, but, and then there's all the time happening where expenses are projected to come down, but this doesn't provide for that.
Counselor Heller.
Yeah, so I'm in favor, as you saw my head nodding, I think I agree with you. But how, this was obviously there for probably fiscal responsibility.
Right.
So how do we make sure that it is expanded in a way that meets the deficiency, or deficiencies that you've identified, but doesn't go too far?
Right, and open it up.
Yeah, and I think, I think that that, and I actually didn't bring it with me, I actually had drafted up and was going to put it in my memo, and I thought, no, I'm not going to go that far and draft up what I think we could say. But you clearly, well, and I left it at home. But you clearly can provide language in whatever manner we want to kind of restrict ourselves associated with that. But quite frankly, I think you could take the whole thing out, and at the end of the day, and just deal with it from an ordinance perspective, which then the council could always change it going forward. But the issue is, is we can put in whatever restrictions we want at that point in time, and then we can also change them going forward. This is very, this is very, very restrictive, and I can't even remember when this first popped up. I think it was at least probably a couple of years ago that I go, oh, my God, what is this thing in here?
Do we know if it's typical for cities, or is it typical for cities to handle it by ordinance? What would, any indication on?
I don't know that. I'd have to do a little bit of research. Just generally, the last 15 years, it's probably not the first time I've seen something like this. But I could, I could do, we could do some research on that front. But, but home rule charters tend to address budgetary issues, and then they go off and do their own thing.
If I had to guess, you know, I would imagine that the concept was to prevent deficit spending, right? Like, spending money you don't have. And, I mean, I really suspect it was many, many years before anybody really read it specifically enough to come to the realization that Earl, I think rightly, pointed out, that it doesn't address when you've actually found cost savings through cutting expenses, or when you have additional revenue that wasn't spent in a previous year, that could be spent, you know, and so it really doesn't, there are several scenarios that are in spirit of that fiscal responsibility, but aren't addressed and allowed by this particular language. And so I do think, I think we should change that. It's, yeah. Counselor Fisher?
So part of the discussion item, would this go, and I agree, first of all, November 25 or 26? I'm not, I would sort of add to that and say that I would assume that November 26, speaking of saving money and cutting expenses, would be less expensive, because it would be the incremental cost since we would already have an election, and that wasn't really stated in here. So if we weren't, if we were already, you know, going to the voters for council elections.
Is there even any incremental costs?
Or? There, it depends on how many other things are on the ballot, so, you know.
What if the fire district has an election this November? Does that help us, or doesn't, doesn't help?
I don't think so.
No, because we wouldn't be paying for that. We'd have to pay.
Yeah.
A coordinated election with the county cost between $5,000 and $10,000. So a special election on an off-year, you'd just be spending that additional money that you wouldn't otherwise.
Right. And the variable, what are the variables? And when you say between 5 and 10, like, like the length of your, like how much space on the ballot you're taking up?
It often, right, compared to other people, also the number of state issues, because the county gets reimbursed per state issue, something like that in that calculation. And finally, taper, if we have a taper issue, that costs more because of the notice and those requirements.
Yeah, okay.
I was going to ask also if we could understand a little bit more about the history of this charter amendment in terms of whether or not it's ever been amended since, or if it's an original provision, to understand a little bit more about maybe why it got put there. I think we're all right that it's to basically try and address not having deficit spending, but I would like to know a little bit more about how we got here.
That's a good. Well, and I assume there'd be a follow-up that would also discuss how we're addressing the issue and what the language would be and all that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. This is just, should we go further into the issue?
Right.
And I think that, you know, for me, I think the preference for me is probably 26, unless there's a anticipated non-emergency expenditure that we're planning to do before that time, so that, I think that savings of money does make sense.
So I think what I've heard is that, yes, people would like to pursue the charter amendment, and we would like to have a little bit of information about whether this is an original provision, or whether it came, oh, you already know, wow.
Well, as, as reported in my quick finger search here on the municipal code, there's usually a date at the bottom of each provision that reflects. So under Section 9.10, it's originally noted as October 3, 66, which was the day of the charter adoption, and then April 5 of 1994.
So does that mean?
It doesn't say, it doesn't show the black line or whatever.
So it was amended?
It appears to have been amended in 1994.
Okay. Well, if we could maybe do a little bit of digging to see what that change was in 94, and then we'd like to ask staff to come back with some proposed language, and I would highly recommend consulting Counselor Holen to develop that language, and that we would pursue this on a timeline for the November 2026 election. And if we are going to be doing that, I know that there's a running list somewhere of other little cleanup charter items, that maybe we think about some of those things in preparation of a November 20, for a November 2026 election as well. Does that summarize accurately? Okay.
Well, well, let me just, let me ask a question about that, because I think there's a difference between, we've kind of got a running list of things that we know need to be cleaned up, and conducting a comprehensive review of the charter.
Oh.
Which I think is a much bigger task, and will take a lot more staff time. And so I don't have a problem with the list of things that we know need to be cleaned up.
Okay, yes.
But do people want to do a comprehensive review? And I guess before we even start that discussion, I would ask City Manager, how much in next year's time have you already got planned, and is there capacity to do that without engendering or endangering other things we have planned?
So on the work plan that we, the draft work plan that we discussed with City Council at the retreat, it did not include this item on there. With that said, I don't foresee, especially if you just want to tackle the list that we already have, honestly, the biggest impact is probably going to be to Cathy.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and legal counsel. So I think from a staff, administrative staff perspective, we certainly could accommodate that in the work plan.
But I'd also recommend.
What about the comprehensive review?
That would be a little different.
Well, I don't know what the difference between a list and a comprehensive review is. What I was going to say is, is that I actually think everybody on council, in addition to staff, ought to read the charter, and read it, and come up with any issues that you've got concerns about. It's not that long. The charter is not that long, right?
It is not.
It's not, it's not like reading, you know, the code.
Agreed. It's going to take council, you know, minutes, right? It might take, it might take me a couple, a few hours, but for you guys, it will take minutes. So, yeah, it's.
So I would say, my personal feeling is that comprehensive review, as I mean it, I don't, I don't think anybody needs to, staff or city attorney or anyone, needs to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. I think it has been very functional for us. I know of at least one area that I thought was confusing and could stand some clarification. And so I think what I was envisioning was a little bit more along the lines of what Earl was suggesting. That's the way a lot of these, the list, has sort of come up, is that questions have come up, and we've all said, huh, that there's something a little weird about that. So I, it is pretty short. I would encourage each of you, let's say by, maybe by August, that you read through the charter, and if there's anything that jumps out at you. In reality, I suspect there won't be a lot, because it's in the moment when there's a, when there's a question that gets raised that you're like, oh, yeah.
It comes up when there's an issue.
Yeah, it comes up when, but, you know.
Is that list, I haven't seen that list. Is that list?
I mean, it's not a, it's not an actual list, but.
I don't know if we have a, it's talked about as a list. Some of those lists are mental lists.
It's a mental, it's a mental list.
But with that said, here's what I would propose, is that, yeah, if council wants to adhere to a timeline laid out by the mayor, that's great. We would then probably bring something back to council with a more formal list in the fall, not because it's the end-all, be-all or the final list, but just for council to kick around. I mean, there certainly are sections that we have been operating just fine with, but that could also be used. The city manager sections of the charter need to be updated.
There's some things about delegating responsibilities.
Correct, exactly. So there are definitely things, if we're going to do it, we'll bring the list back. It could be that you make political, strategic decisions and say, whoa, 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 that is too big of a bite, and it may hamper this low-hanging fruit that we could get over here. Let's separate those out. There's all sorts of those kinds of conversations that we can have once we sort of see a more complete list.
Yeah. And whether it ends up being, you know, explain the delegation versus change the way people are elected. I mean, right, that, I.
Yes.
Some substantive changes might be much bigger.
Some administrative.
Yes.
Cleanups and things of that nature. And just for clarity, when we're talking about comprehensive review, we're not talking, going so far as to elect a whole new charter review commission and do the whole.
No, that was not my vision, no.
Just for clarity on the record that we're all on the same page.
Did anybody have that, that we would?
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
That we'd have a charter commission, and that we, like, no, this is.
This would be a few discreet questions that would address some of these top-of-mind issues that would enhance the administrative functional, functioning of the city.
That was my vision, and I think that seems like there's agreement there. Okay. And hopefully we summarize that so that we know what we're doing. Okay. Did we want to circle back at all to fences? Do we want to leave that for another time? What do we want to do?
I would recommend. My recommendation is that we schedule that in July or something, where we can provide baseline information about what fence requirements are.
Okay.
And that way, I think then everybody will be talking from the same place.
Yep. And I would encourage everyone, it is very confusing, but read, you know, do your best to sort through the municipal code with the drawing of what the different areas are, and what's allowed, and all of that. I know, it's very confusing. Okay. So then moving on to reports, I think since our last meeting, I don't have much to report. I have been contacted by a few people about the light at, on both sides of the issue at Franklin and Bellevue, so that is, it's still a relative, and I think I've been trying to forward for all of you, for your informations, just so that you know that that's going on. And other than that, I don't have anything to report.
Actually.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor, if I could piggyback, one of my items in my report is related to that issue, so if it's okay for me to bring that up now. Very recently, I know that there's been a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of, we heard tonight from one side, there's, we're obviously getting a lot of emails from both sides. I do think that there's a long-ago project that Jay and I were talking about, that we would like to find out if you'd like us to dust off, that didn't quite make it. There was, and Jay, I'll let you talk about it, actually. You know, you know the details. It predates me, so.
So, and a number of you may have been around, when we were working on a project with City of Greenwood Village to convert the underpass at Little Dry Creek, to make it a low-water crossing for pedestrians. So it would come out in Woody Hollow on our side, it would come out on the Greenwood side, and then a sidewalk extension would be needed on the Greenwood side. That, through the underpass, it would, it would take some engineering to make it work. We've worked through some of the preliminary, and I can't remember what year it was, it might have been 2006 or '07.
So just to clarify, there's an underpass there now?
There is a.
But it's just for the.
It's just for the creek.
That was the part, I was like, there's an underpass?
We've, we've looked at it, that it would be.
Well, you can walk through it.
Yes.
Okay.
And with some reengineering and some excavation without having to redo the bridge, you couldn't ride a horse under it, you'd have to dismount your horse. That fell apart. It was a project we were working with Greenwood Village, and we were supportive of it, Greenwood supportive of it, then some things changed, and it got put on hold or canceled. And we were wondering if, you know, we, we hear the safety issues that people talk about and the want to cross at that intersection. Is that something council would like us to re-talk, talk to our, our neighbors and see if they were willing to look at that project?
Yeah. Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, so I live in the neighborhood right there around Woody Hollow, and I remember this well, because there was a lot of controversy in, among the neighbors around this. And ultimately, my recollection, I came to the city council meeting where it was discussed and so on, was that there was resistance, basically, to not wanting to open up Cherry Hills Village to others from other places.
Well, and.
That they could then, on the bike path, find their way into our village, where otherwise they might have to cross the street.
But I do think from a, I do think from a process perspective, there may have been individual residents who were stating that, but I believe that City, that Cherry Hills Village was still in favor, as a city, of moving forward with that project, and that it was the Greenwood Village side that actually, put the kibosh on it.
Jay, I'm curious how the cost of that, and obviously, I know you don't have, do you have just a general idea of how the cost of that would compare to the, the streetlight cost? More expensive, less expensive?
It would be, it would be less expensive.
It would be less expensive?
Yes, it would be less expensive.
I think that's such a great alternative.
Well, so let me just say this, that, you know, you've seen all the emails that have come through. It is not a, an overwhelming volume on either side. That is a great alternative to improve pedestrian safety. I don't know that that addresses the concerns all that you have heard. Some people are concerned about pedestrian crossing there, others are concerned about vehicular traffic exiting, and so, I mean, I'm, I think it's certainly worth exploring for the pedestrian safety side of it. I'll also just point out again that, like, you really cannot please everyone, ever. The underpass at Hamden on the High Line Canal was very controversial, and there are still people to this day.
They hate it.
That hate it, because it is bringing transient people into the community and creating a safety risk. And there have been isolated incidents. We cannot say definitively that it has not done that. So, you know, it's.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not an end-all answer, but it may help some of the issues that have been brought up.
Since we were not the ones to, frankly, put the kibosh on the project to begin with, it was Greenwood Village, well, maybe their context has now changed.
Maybe.
They may look at that through a different lens now.
And I think the other thing is that I am very focused on our master plan. Improving trail connectivity is in our master plan, and so I think that that is something that we can, that we can, you know, support focusing on.
We're not asking for you to definitively do anything. We're just saying.
Yeah.
Would you like us to dust it off, and frankly, initiate conversations with Greenwood Village again?
I think that's worth asking where they are with it now.
And I would very much be in favor of that. I would just say that, for the rest of the council, that those of us that live in South Cherry Hills, to get access to the High Line Canal.
Would be huge.
The best way is across Bellevue. And I, in the summertime, make that journey once or twice a week, because I like to run or bike on the canal, even though it is sometimes dangerous. So that would improve safety a great deal. I think it's something that should be considered.
Just a curiosity point. Do you use Franklin across Bellevue, or do you go up to Clarkson and use the light?
Or University.
I did.
Or University.
Well, the, the problem with, there is no accessibility on the south side of Bellevue to walk at all, right? So you can't go across the street and then walk down. You, it's just not possible.
But you can keep going down Franklin all the way to the canal.
You can go down Clarkson Center.
You can go down Clarkson Center.
I go down Franklin and there's actually a street before Franklin, forgetting the name of it, it's right across.
Is it Race?
Race. Race goes down to a court, but then there is a pathway that gets you to the canal.
But the point is, is, I guess my question was, you're crossing Bellevue at an unmarked intersection when you do that.
Yes, yes. I believe there are hundreds of Cherry Hills.
Can you tell us what time of day it is?
You've had this kind of thing.
It doesn't happen, I'm just, I want to make sure.
Sergeant Holthing is going to be watching for you now.
Because there's no way, if you, I guess you could go down all the way on University and get, maybe get to the canal.
And Clarkson, you can access them both.
Clarkson, you can go down Clarkson.
But it's not feasible, really.
But, but I will tell you the, and Jay, remind me, the underpass, because again, I think the motivations from a Cherry Hills Village perspective were really more about trail connectivity and less about pedestrian crossing Bellevue safety, that I'm sure was a factor. But that meant that there was south side of Bellevue sidewalk installation as well. I don't remember whether or not that was part of the reason Greenwood Village decided to ultimately pull their support from the project. But that would, to, to your point, that would help fix some of that connectivity problems.
Right now there are boulders, big rocks basically along there.
Rocks can be removed. I mean, no, you know.
Unfeasible, that's not feasible to walk, especially with a bike.
Right, yeah, you can walk, but they could put a sidewalk if it was.
They could put a sidewalk, they would need to do that, yeah.
Well, as long as we're talking about this issue, I just had a question for Director Goldie, which is, what was your thought about, and I think it was in the letter that Ms. Gella, if I'm saying it right, wrote about the raised median on, on Bellevue?
I, I would have to look at it a little deeper. There would be a number of ways. I don't think it's wide enough there to do offset raised medians where you'd have protected left turns.
If I could ask though, that we don't start problem solving until we actually understand what, if and what and the extent of the problem. Again, some people have said the problem is pedestrian crossing, some, that a raised median wouldn't address that at all.
No, no, no.
Some people have said it's a traffic.
Traffic safety.
Right, and so.
By not permitting those left turns. I was just curious what his thought was.
I know, but I, I don't want to, I think things.
I can take it offline.
Right, yeah, start to get legs before, prematurely get legs and send us in a, off on a tangent that we're not prepared to even discuss until we know what the situation is.
To be, to be clear, that, this conversation is probably a good exercise because it'll help remind me to be clear with council about what we're asking. We thus far have not received direction from the city council to begin evaluating a traffic signal. So we have not, that's why Jay doesn't have a, so we have not done a lot of work there. We are asking you to actually then go and start doing real work though with the underpass. So, so we're spinning energy on the underpass, not spinning energy on the traffic signal yet.
And I think that.
That's a council direction that we would need.
And that's why I said I do think that trail connectivity is called upon in the master plan. I think that is something that as a city council is defined as a priority in our master plan, and I think that is something that would be worthy of the council directing the staff to do personally, but.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I do think there is a safety issue too, without having to do traffic studies and the like. But in any event, maybe it's a distinction without meaning because I agree with you, Mayor.
Okay, so please do that and then we'll, we'll just see where, where it goes from there. Okay. And then, okay, so I had given my report, I didn't have anything else to report. We'll start down here. Councilor Fisher?
Thank you. I don't have a report really, other than to make a statement in response to the horrific attack in Boulder last weekend and just to say that I would like to publicly condemn all such anti-Semitic and hateful incidents and solidarity, not with just those victims, but others in the recent past, all around our country, not just in Boulder. And also on a happier note, to wish all of the dads in the room a happy Father's Day.
I do have something that I'd like to run by council. So I have unsolicited in the last month or so, had a couple of my neighbors tell me about what a terrific experience it was being on the police, citizens' police academy. Comment from our.
Yeah, we are getting ready to wrap up our academy for the year. Graduation is this Thursday here, so you're welcome to join us at six o'clock. But that program has been very successful for the last two years and we, we hope to continue it for years come, so.
They, especially both of them noted the K-9 portion of the, of the academy.
Yeah, so we were lucky enough to have both K-9 Tuco here and K-9 Shadow, who's currently in the academy. They did a demonstration a few weeks ago and, and it went off with a hitch. It was good.
So in reflecting on that and then also reflecting on our conversation, I think it's a couple of months back now, about how we're having difficulty, is how I would phrase it, in filling our commissions and our boards. I have a suggestion for the council to consider, which is that we potentially schedule a know your government series, maybe three evenings on a Thursday or Wednesday night in, later in the year, where we could have, I know it is, it's a, it's a burden perhaps, would be a burden, not perhaps on staff, maybe to come in, but to advertise that to the community and to, and to actually ask the council to seek out a couple of individuals that they would ask, that they think might be potential counselors in the future, to come and to participate in that. And I, my, and this is all subject to change or what have you, but is that we would have three evenings a week apart where we would have Jay and Paul and others talk about their area of responsibility. One of the counselors would maybe be there, we wouldn't all have to be there, but we would have an opportunity for citizens to learn more about how government works in Cherry Hills and engage them. And the ask at the end would be to consider joining one of our commissions or boards or being more involved in the city. So it was just a thought that I had, I mentioned it to our city manager in our, our meeting a month or so ago, I was going to bring it up last time, but it was 10:30 at night. I read the room that everyone wanted to go home, so anyways, I just would throw that out there.
Yeah, I think people are much more receptive this evening at 7:45. Counselor McQuire?
I, I think that's a great idea and when people, people come up to me and say, oh, thank you so much for sitting on city council, let's just be such a, you know, such a lot of work, blah, blah, blah. And I said, you know what, it's, it's really fun. I said, we're so fortunate because we have such an incredible staff at the city, they make it so easy for us. It's not nearly as much work as you would think it could be somewhere else. And I said that, and, and they'll say, well, are you enjoying it? And I'll say, you know, my favorite thing has been learning all the things that go on in running a city like Cherry Hills. And I said, and we're not even that complicated a city, right? I mean, I can't imagine going, you know, what it's like in Denver. But I said, it's, it's fascinating seeing all of the things that go on and all of the things where your tax money goes. I would be happy to be involved in something like that, so. And I would come to all three meetings and I would in fact suggest that if we're making staff come, we ought to all be there too, so. But I have no other report, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holden?
Maybe on a hybrid basis?
Yeah.
No report.
Counselor Eber?
I mentioned last time that I would give a report on the Dr. Cog meeting of May 21st and so let me quickly give you the highlights. And that is that they approved the 25, 26 budget. Unlike what we heard from the metro, South Metro group, Dr. Cog is feeling comfortable with their budget. In fact, to the extent that they approved basically a 4% increase to worker compensation for staff and also to add some additional staff members, they were conscious to mention that that would not cause us to have higher dues to participate, but that was number one. Number two, there is something called the building policy collaboration and jurisdictional And basically what it is, it's a 35, nearly 35 million jurisdictional support award program that is given to the different jurisdictions. It's a component of their decarbonization program, building policy collaborative. The idea behind it is to adopt and implement building decarbonization policies to improve efficiency of energy use and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And they are pretty comfortable that this funding source is going to not be pulled by the federal government and that they can go forward with the program. Therefore, what it envisions is money going to local jurisdictions and there's a formula on who gets how much, that they would be able to hire staff, train existing staff, implement permitting and administrative systems, provide technical assistance for the impacted community and to encourage community engagement. For Cherry Hills Village, we are eligible for up to $50,000. That is the lowest tier, but in large part that's based on our numbers. And it's based on the number of business, there's a formula that we can certainly go into if anybody has more questions, we can talk offline. But for us, it's a potential $50,000 revenue support, revenue source, but like I say, it's for staff and policy implementation. It is not to fund people's individual subsidized of X technology. It is not for that. It's to implement policy that leads to greater decarbonization for everybody, not just specific applicants. See me for more if you have any questions. Number three, there's a regional multimodal freight plan update. And, you know, again, it's in process, they don't have anything finalized yet, but the idea is to move freight and commercial products more efficiently throughout the metropolitan area. Stay tuned for more details. And the fourth is probably the most exciting, and that is that June 25th is Bike to Work Day. And Cherry Hills Village, I, I think Emily would be our person, or perhaps you can talk a little bit about it, but Cherry Hills Village will have a station is my understanding. It will be, starting at what time in the morning? Six or something? And go through the day and there will be goodies and promotional materials. And last year they had over 19,000 riders, 25% of which were first time timers. They seek to increase that number. They encourage all of us and all of the members who are in the community to participate. They believe that last year it eliminated approximately 730,000 vehicle miles, just out of 19,000 riders. The big expansion this year is that it's not just for those who are commuting, but it is also encouraged to try and not have your car on any use for that day. So whether it's going to the grocery store or shopping for whatever else it is or doing errands, that they are hoping that we try and use June 25th as Bike, not just to work day, but use your bike day. It's an opportunity for us by being a local sponsor to highlight our local bike infrastructure was one of the things that we were told that we should publicize, to engage with the biking community. I know that publicizing our bike trails and our overall trails has somewhat been a little bit of a dicey issue for us on some facts of our individual local trails, but nonetheless, where we can talk about things like our trails along Quincy and our paved trails, we should certainly do that. And then, a little dicey to talk about the canal, but it would be nice to see if we can get some feedback of whether or not people use the canal as a commuting method or if it's strictly a exercise and pleasure use. They do have posters, calendars, they encourage us to post things on websites, social media, whatever it is that we can individually do as communities. And I assume, I haven't looked on our website media, but I assume it's probably on there, hopefully on there.
Not sure about this year's, but I know that we've promoted it in past years for certain, so I, I'm, I'm not sure where we sit.
And if we need any posters, that we can certainly get them and download them and put them up on our boards or anything like that. But the idea is, you know, we've gone to the level of saying that we'd like to be a station, we can certainly promote it to the best of our abilities that we can do so. And that's my report.
Who, do staff people man that station or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think that's wonderful. I'm wondering if, I don't, I mean, it's a little late at this point, but that sounds like something that people from our community would also be interested in doing.
I think last year it was Emily and Jenny and maybe someone from PTRC may have helped out, so.
I mean, I know it doesn't require a lot of volunteers, it feels like.
We do it, we do it right here at City Hall.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it was encouraged that as the elected officials that, and, you know, senior staff, that if it's possible for us to get out there and show the community that we're really appreciative of the fact that they're riding bicycles instead of using carbon emitting, you know, vehicles to get their ways around Denver, that we appreciate that, as well as to just put, you know, for the riders to reflect that, you know, the mayor and city council showed up to actually care enough that, I believe if it starts that early in the morning, I think it's about a four hour process, six to 10-ish. I don't know if they have an evening component or, but the, but the idea there is, anybody and everybody, I mean, it's certainly open that if we all want to sign up for a part of a shift or just informally show up to help these guys, I think the more the merrier.
Okay. Counselor Heller?
No report?
Awesome, thank you. Staff?
My big, two items that I had for you were the conversation that we had about the underpass, but also then a reminder about the police citizens' academy this Thursday. Paul?
6:00 PM?
Yes, 6:00 PM.
No report this evening. Real quick, we've got a big CPI summer coming up. We've started our outreach. We will continue to do that. There will be some major congestion on Colorado and Holly and parts of Quincy. So we have begun trying to communicate with our residents and we will continue to do that. You'll see signboards out and our, our posters and on email blasts, online letters to residents that are directly affected. So this will be one of our biggest summers in a long time and so we have started the reach out and we'll continue to do that.
Great, thank you. Director Goldie, I thought that the article about that in the Cryer, in the current Cryer was excellent.
Well, thank you. That was Laura's idea, I won't take credit for that.
Just a quick note and goes along the lines of what occurred in Boulder over the weekend. This week there is a small Jewish group that is gathering in the park and we did manage to work in getting a couple officers to cover that event just to give them peace of mind, just with what occurred in Boulder, so.
Thank you.
That's all from the police department though.
Clerk? City Attorney? All right, well, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned at 7:54.